If you go, all right. Seven o'clock. Now we will call the meeting to a one.
Fidelito. United States of America. Future Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As customary, we'll observe a moment of silence. We'll take the time to announce that this meeting is being recorded and televised by Whitman-Hanson Cable Access. Seek a motion or accept correspondence in the read file.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seek a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Public forum, if anyone would like to speak now. Forever hold your peace.
I was gonna say.
Seek a motion to approve meeting minutes for open session, October 25th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a couple of minutes, but at 7:05, we'll be starting a scheduled hearing, public hearing for the purpose of determining a residential factor to be applied in calculating the percentages of the tax levy to be borne by each class of real estate and personal property for FY 2023. I think we have to wait till exactly 7:05.
Yep. Can I take a minute and just introduce the board?
Yes.
All right. So Whitman Board of Assessors, we have Chairman John Noska. Beside him is Heidi Hosmer, who is our clerk, and our newest member Chrissy McPherson, who is a great addition to the board.
Excellent. Thank you, and thank you for everything you do.
We usually at least have--
While you're waiting, would you consider taking up an item that I would otherwise do under the town administration report?
Yes.
The, as you know, Ken Laitel, our town accountant, has moved over to become our treasure collector. This has necessitated seeking an interim or consulting accountant until such time as the board takes action to appoint someone to that position. I met two weeks ago with Eric Kinsherf. He's a CPA. He's actually a Whitman-grown man. He grew up on Jerome Street, and he has a very successful practice advising, providing accounting services for municipalities, forensic accounting, and all the nifty little things that somebody might want to do if they want to make money on their own. And I have asked him to consider, and he has offered, to serve as a consulting accountant for us until, for 90 days or until we bring someone in to take over. The hourly rate is $1.50 per hour. It would probably require the better part of a day a week in order to accomplish the things we have to do right now. So I'm seeking the approval of the board to engage him under a consulting agreement.
All right. So I would entertain a motion to enter a consultant accountant agreement with the Kinsherf group at $150 an hour for an estimated eight hours a week. Right, Frank?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
The cost will be covered by the existing line until such time as someone is hired.
Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
And it is 7:05.
Excellent. Good evening. So, you know, annually, the Board of Assessors is taxed with--
Is that a pun?
Yes. Thank you. With presenting to the board a selectmen their options as far as whether we maintain a single tax rate or whether we shift or split the tax rate between the various classifications of properties. So the selectmen must hold a hearing each year to consider the tax rate options available to the town under property tax classification. The Board of Assessors will make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen whether to establish different rates among the major property classes, which are the residential, commercial, industrial, and personal. We abbreviate that as the CIP. So the Department of Revenue annually reviews and approves the adjusted values proposed by the Assessors Office. So for this fiscal year, our values have already been approved by the Department of Revenue. The assessed residential value is based on the comparable sale and market analysis. So as properties sell, their prices are analyzed each year, and that's how we come up with what a residential property would be worth. When we're dealing with commercial value, it's based on both the income and expenses that they incur, as well as a sales analysis and a cost analysis. So the commercial are rated or assessed differently. So Massachusetts requires that we assess each property at January 1st of each year. So what is standing on the ground at that date, full and fair cash value? Every five years, there is an in-depth analysis. We just went through that in fiscal 2022, so we're not scheduled for that more in-depth analysis until fiscal 2027. Although interim years, which is one we are in right now, we do look at the sales analysis, and values do change, even though it's not a certification year. So for fiscal 2023, here's what the Department of Revenue approved for valuation. So you see, the residential value is $2,737,255, and that's 89.69% of the total valuation. The other three classes combined total 10% of the total valuation. So that's an important ratio that the board looks at when they're trying to determine whether or not to split the tax rate or go with a single tax rate. Now, even among the commercial, industrial, and personal, you know, you see the commercial component of those three classes as just being under 5%. So that's a consideration that the board takes. So, and I just want to say that the figures that I've used in this illustration are going to change due to the fact that there was a special town meeting last night. This was, this packet was created last week, so we're just going to use these as an example of what a shift would look like. But here's how we get there, is we take what was voted to be raised, and we subtract estimated receipts, and that comes up with the tax levy. So we have a tax levy in mind. In this illustration, it's the $30 million. To come up with a tax rate, it's simply the $30 million that we've just come up with divided by the valuation that was approved by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue that gives us a tax rate. In this example, it's $1,357, but I don't feel confident that that's what will actually be approved for fiscal 2023. So now, here's where we analyze a shift in the tax rate. So we're going to assume this tax rate of $1,357. We are allowed to shift between 1 and 1.5% shift. So row one of this chart shows that everybody has the same rate, residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. The next row shows a 5% shift, and what that does is that lowers the residential tax rate down to $1,349, and it increases the other three classes up to $1,424. If you go to the very bottom row, that's the maximum that we would be allowed to shift. It shows that the tax rate for the residential would go down to $1,279, and for the other three classes, it would go up to $20.35. But so let's see what that looks like in tax dollars, which is the next slide. So to the left of the red bar is the residential class. To the right is the commercial, industrial, and personal properties. Again, row one shows everybody has the same tax rate. We are using the average single-family value under the residential class, and on the other side, we're using the average commercial-industrial value for illustration. So row three, if you're on the residential side, a 5% shift would lower the average single-family tax bill by $34, but it would increase the commercial-industrial-personal by $307. If we go to the extreme case, shifting it up to that bottom row, we would see it would save the average single-family tax bill $164. It would increase the average commercial-industrial-personal bill by $1,001.52. This next slide just demonstrates where we've come over the last 14 years, the increase in the single-family total value. You divide that valuation by the number of parcels. We come up with the $4.2530. If we're using that, you know, just example of the $1,357 for the tax rate, it shows the average single tax bill would be $5,707, which would be an increase of $107 over last year's average family. There is one class of property that Whitman does not assess, nor does the majority of the municipalities in the state of Massachusetts, and that's open space. There are only 22 communities that classify open space. Whitman is not one of them. So beyond recommending whether we split the tax rate or not, there are two considerations that need to be voted on by the Board of Selectmen when it comes to getting the tax rate set. One of those options is a small commercial exemption. And so if we go over who's eligible, it's sole proprietors and partnerships. They can have no more than 10 employees, and that's company-wide. The total value of the property cannot exceed $1 million. The business must be certified by the Department of Labor and Workforce Development. Now, every year, the Board of Assessors gets the listing from the Department of Labor and Workforce and lists in town who would be eligible. So what the benefit would possibly be is up to 10% of the commercial levy can be shifted from these eligible parcels to non-eligible. The difficult thing here is, is if the, if the property is not owner-occupied, the tax benefit goes to the owner of the property as opposed to the business owner. It's really difficult to track, and some of the businesses that we're talking about are businesses that are just run out of someone's home. So it's, it was really muddy waters. So the board has voted not to recommend that option. The next option is the residential exemption, and that would shift some of the tax burden inside of the residential class, but from the lower-priced homes to the higher-priced homes. So for instance, maybe Hingham would be a community that would consider this exemption. Where in Whitman, most of the residents, it's, you know, homogenous, same type of residence, they're all owner-occupied. There's not a huge fluctuation in valuation. So for that reason, the Board of Assessors has recommended not to adopt that exemption option either. So the board has voted to maintain the single tax rate, not to adopt the small commercial exemption, nor to adopt the residential exemption. So those, those are the votes made by the board. Additionally, we are obligated to let the Board of Selectmen know at this point what the excess levy capacity is. However, I have a figure up on the slide. That was calculated last week. That number is going to change, and it's going to change because of what happened at the town meeting last night. So that's not, that's not what we're looking at. I believe, Frank, do we believe it's going to lower?
In my calculations, it, the, my estimates, the levy capacity will go down a little bit because of some corrections we're making.
Right.
But until they, until we resolve the placement of those other accounts--
Right. We have more than one variable going on.
One of, one of the variables is that we included in our revenue estimates funds that were coming from the Public Works Department as indirect charges, and they were, they're not supposed to be assessed that way, so we're fixing those numbers now. Once the clerk enters all of the votes from the town meeting and the DOR approves the corrections on the estimated revenue, we'll have a final number.
Right.
So the revenue estimates are going to change slightly, too. This is, this process is intended to give you an idea of what happens if you tax everyone the same or if you tax people differently. The actual setting of the tax rate occurs after the board votes to decide how to assess, and the assessor compiles all that information, calculates the tax rate, prepares a recap, and then the Board of Assessors, the selectmen, the clerk, the accountant, all sign off on that recap sheet. It goes into Boston, they reanalyze it, and then they come back with an approved tax rate. So it's, it's marginally going to be where we're talking. There's not going to be a huge difference, but there will be a minor difference. I have learned a long time ago, don't tell people what the tax rate is and then change it.
Right. This is not the tax rate. So this is not the tax rate. This is, we're using that as an example.
So you would actually be seeking three vote, three votes from the board tonight?
Correct.
The small commercial exemption, the residential exemption, and then to--
Factor of one.
Adopt the factor of one.
Yes, sir.
All right. Kathy, while you're up there, there's been a little scuttle over industrial growth. Could you explain how we have more industrial growth this year?
Yes, I can. So I don't know whether you're familiar, there are 11 warehouse condos that are new up on Bedford Street. So the land prior to the condos going up had been classified as industrial land, and that was way back when. So, so they're not, so when these 11 different condos got created, now rather than one piece of vacant land, we have 11 condos that are valued higher. But because the land was designated as industrial land, that factor went into the industrial tally. If that answers your question?
It does.
Oh, good.
And hopefully it answered everyone's question.
Good. Yes.
All right. So thank you very much for that, and again, thank you to the entire Board of Assessors. We know it's a lot of work, and thank you very much. At this time, I would seek a motion to, over the small commercial exemption.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And that'll be a vote not to adopt, correct?
It'll be a vote to set, to not adopt the commercial exemption--
Right.
--the residential exemption, and then to accept the factor of one.
Yes. That'll be my, that'll be my motion.
That is your motion. So then I'll second that motion. All right. Discussion? Yes.
Yes. So does the public have to speak?
Yep. After I say, after I say discussion, the board will go, and then--
Does the board vote before--
No, no, no. The board will speak, and then open it up to anyone else. If anyone from the board wants to--
I have a question, Kathy.
Yeah.
That, the new condos that are on the industrial property, will that revert to, back to regular assessed property or stay on industrial?
No, no. So it is, so it's assessed, but it's assessed, it's assessed in the industrial class. It's going to stay there.
Unless it's rezoned, it remains industrial.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Sorry, sorry. I've got you, John.
So what do we, so am I only allowed to speak on this one? Or can I ask all my questions?
Come on up. You can ask them all.
I'm going to have 25 or 30, dude.
I, it won't be that long, I promise. John Galvin, 41 High Street. I have several questions and a few comments that I'd like to make. The first comment I actually have, I think the assessors will probably answer for me so I understand it a little better. We've had several new, what I would call, split-use buildings, retail on the bottom, apartments or whatever, several new ones, including a proposed one to go in where the office is going. How are those classified where they're--
They're mixed use.
So they're, so--
So the residential portion of the value of that building is tallied in residential, and the commercial portion of the valuation of that property is tallied in the commercial component.
Okay. So now, if the, if that such building is a rental unit, then the owners of the building would pay both the commercial and the residential fee?
So it's, it's one valuation. It's a single valuation.
Right.
But the portion, let's say it's worth 10 bucks, for ease of, you know, math. Let's say the whole building's worth 10 bucks, and so $2 is going to be in the tallied, in the commercial tally of valuation, and the eight bucks will go into the residential.
Okay.
Am I answering--
And that building's one owner, so that one owner has to specifically pay--
It's, the bill is going to be the bill, no matter which class of property--
So now, if, so if that then divided into condos, does that change the way--
Condo is ownership versus apartments, which are rentals.
Right.
So I'm not--
So that mixed-use building that's a condo would then have whoever owns the--
We, we have no mix that are condos.
Okay. They're all retail.
Correct.
I mean, rental. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The, when you split, I guess it's slide number eight. I don't know if you want to throw that up there. We're voting to, if we decide to vote to split the residential factor, do all three CPI classes--
Yes.
--classes have to be impacted?
Yes.
We can't split out--
Nope. It's the three of them versus the one. Yes, sir.
Okay. So I guess, thank you. That's all my questions. The rest will be comments. Last year, at this time, I sat in this exact chair, and I commented that we are going to have a challenging couple of years ahead of us, specifically because we have two public construction projects that are about to come, that are moving forward. We're now 12 months closer to those projects going for debt exclusion votes. Those are going to be significant impact to the taxpayers of the town of Whitman. I'm not sure that there's anything that we can do here that's going to affect necessarily the impact of these projects, but we have to do something.
Can I, can I interrupt you? I'm sorry. So none of this will affect the levy. The levy is the levy. It doesn't, so we're just talking about how we disperse the levy.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand. I guess if I get a little leeway from the chairman, my point is, is that we're kind of stuck on what we can do here. Whether we split the tax rate, is it really going to make an impact or not? I would make a suggestion that a residential exception, not necessarily this year, but in the future, is something that we need to strongly consider. Because when we have these two large debt exclusion votes, we need to think about the people who can least afford it. And considering the residential exception, and even possibly even the small commercial exemption, in the future is something that needs to be considered. I think, in general, this committee, the town in general, needs to start thinking about what's going to happen when these debt exclusion votes come in. And I'm almost strongly suggesting that we consider something along the lines of a budget override committee that we had before, don't call it that, but some kind of committee that's going to evaluate what we can do to increase revenue, somehow evaluate who's going to get hit the hardest, what we can do to try to help the taxpayers who aren't going to be able to afford when we go to vote on a new middle school. What can we do to help them? Are there other revenues, you know, the marijuana revenue? How can we expedite that? The, you know, are there license fees that were, geez, we're not charging as much as other towns? Anything. I mean, there's a lot of money in there. What was it, $18 million in estimated receipts? Is there a way that we can make that $20 million? You know, what can we do? And I would suggest that there should be some kind of committee, because if we leave it up to the respective building committees, I don't think we're going to get what we want to go forward. So that's kind of my comment. I know--
I'd like to comment as well, if you don't mind, John. Would you bring up the distribution of--
Yes.
--property?
Right there.
Right now, 110 million out of 2 billion is commercial. The other 91 is personal, and the personal is also commercial, commercial. So let's call it 200 million. It's only 10% of our tax base. If you do a significant shift, and any shift on these ratios is significant, there's nothing to keep those businesses in town. It really isn't. If you, if you hike your commercial tax rate, the business we have is going to look for friendlier communities, which won't be Hingham, by the way, but it may be Rockland, it may be Abington, it may be Bridgewater, who have single-class rates and who have the ability to track commercial property. And I would hate to strip a portion of our tax base by forcing them to go elsewhere. We've looked at this, I've been looking at this number for 20, 28 years, and I have yet to come up with an example where it would make more sense for us to shift the tax burden, because the businesses we have in this community are very small. All the big businesses are gone. Other than Stop &amp; Shop, they're gone. I don't want to drive them out. And you make a very good point, John, and it is that we have to start looking at where we, where we go from here, but that's a topic for a different meeting. That's a budget meeting topic. I don't want to kill the assessors by dragging them through this, but you make a point well. And, and we, we have talked about that individually, that as we look at new growth, this year's new growth, frankly, was a disappointment. I don't expect it to get a whole lot better next year. So we're going to have to get more creative.
That was my, only point of my discussion, was to use this opportunity to challenge this board, to get more creative, and we're now lost 12 months from when I sat here last year, and I think we need to move forward quickly on something, and that'll be all. Thank you.
So I would just add that, very similar to John in this presentation last year, I thought this may be the year we have to look at something else. But when you, when you see this year, that, you know, for really, I mean-- But when you see this year, that, you know, for really, I mean, for less than a dollar, you're talking about upping the commercial tax rate almost 62% per thousand. So for what little savings per thousand you actually see in the residential area, you, exactly, you drive out business. And I think we start to see more and more, as the properties get built, they're filling up, which is a good sign, as we get more commercial property and all of a sudden the project's finished and you see businesses in it within, you know, a month or six weeks, that's great. But for me, what I like to see-- Cut me off, Frank. If you look around this town, we have businesses that last, that stay here, that have been in this community for 10, 15, 20 years. They thrive here. And I thought it would be the year that, you know, we did think outside of the box, but it's just the hurt you put on one group doesn't benefit the other enough.
I agree, and I would say that, I hear your message loud and clear, though. We do have a small budget working committee, or work group that has been, we attended an assessors meeting so that we could listen carefully to what they were doing and learn more about the process, find ways to get better at projecting and that kind of thing, and we're looking closely at local receipts, looking at the lottery, looking at all the different areas that we can, I want to get to know better and also think creatively about ways that we can, you know, find more revenue, or be smarter about the way that we, with indirect costs, want to be, want to make sure that we're being very precise about indirect costs, not too much or not too little, just trying to shore up all those areas, because we know that in the future there are some investments that need to be made, and we want to make sure that we're efficient. So I definitely hear that message, and I want to keep it present in my mind and keep rolling up the sleeves and keep getting better in those areas, so.
Do you have any comment? Also, I understand what you're saying, John, and I've always pushed for a factor of one for the main reason is that to maintain businesses in town, we are not, we don't have a 128 or a 24 highway where, you know, you can have industrial parks that are really flourishing, like Rockland has a huge industrial park because they're right by the highway, Noel Hainover the same thing. We don't have that. What we have is businesses being built, business on the bottom and apartments or housing on top. It's a unique way of getting more businesses in town and increasing the revenues that way. But, you know, I think to change the factor and have it split rate, and we lose 1, 2, 3, 5, 20 businesses, go elsewhere, we'd only be really hurting ourselves. I think, again, I can remember when we were looking on Route 14, that maybe Home Depot would go there, they ended up going into Brockton, right? Only because 14 was such a small road that they tracked the trailers, no. Right? They weren't going to go there, they'd rather stay, you know, on 27, which was two miles away. It's a shame, but that's what happened. We're lucky that Stop &amp; Shop came in. We lose one supermarket, but then Stop &amp; Shop came in and then built the people out. So I mean, that's more businesses there in that area there. We're lucky that way. And as I say, like Randy said, we have businesses here that are 20, 30, 40 years in business here, you know? And like Minaj, who just decided to retire after, I don't know how many years he's been in that building. So I would always go with a factor of one, not to chase businesses out of town. It's that simple.
May as well. With the 90-10 split, I think I said this the last year as well, the math is pretty easy, to save the average homeowner a dollar, the average business would have to pay 10. So may as well stick with a factor of one until we can, until there is a compelling reason to switch. Maybe commercial growth increases a lot in the next couple of years, I don't see it happening, but could be the case. Although on the residential exemption, John does make a good point, it's probably something I'll think about for the next year. If this board complies with the MBTA communities, really revitalizes East Whitman, and sees an increase in more mixed-use development, more rental properties, that's probably something we'll want to look at as a way to save the, you know, the families that need it the most.
All right. That's it. So we have a motion and a second, and just to reiterate the motion, that is, just go over it again real quick, just to get this right. It is, I'm sorry, I've lost it. Anybody? Help me out?
Small commercial.
We are voting no on a small commercial exemption. We are voting for. The motion is to vote for a rate of one, and we would not be adopting the commercial exemption.
I believe there's one motion on the commercial rate now.
I think you added them all, right?
I added them all.
Add them all.
You all three.
The recommendation of the Board of Assessors.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, COVID-19 update. Chief Clancy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good evening. Just a quick update. This past week, we only, we had 25 positive cases. We've been in the range of 20 for the last several weeks. We remain in constant there, out of 355 tests performed. So we have roughly a 7% positivity based upon the tests that have been performed. I don't want that to get lost in trends, in the numbers. The wastewater info is coming in, the DPW is working with the company, they're sending it off a couple of times a week, and it's coming in, we're starting to compile that data. I've spoken with a couple of members on the board of how we're going to relate that to the community, and we're going to work on that moving forward. I just want to tell you, we have two clinics coming up, one November 30th, 3:00 to 6:45, and also one December 15th, 9:00 to 12:45. Anybody's available to access that through the town website, and also on the COVID link on the town website. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Okay, nothing under the chairman's report. New business. Actual point, Josh Fatumi to the position of Associate Member of the Historical Commission for a three-year term through June 30th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask that the board table that. I've been informed this afternoon that one of the members that we had thought had left the committee is, in fact, returning, so.
So you say you have motion to table?
Yes.
Motion to table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Amendment to COVID-19 guidelines. Frank?
The Board of Health has distributed, and I believe it's in the packet, some guidelines to follow that they're recommending that the town follow in dealing with COVID-19, which apparently is never, ever going to go away. I will find it momentarily.
You know, it was, it's right after it.
The Board has recommended the health age amendment to COVID-19 guideline protocol for town hall employees. The testing positive suggests that employees should stay out for five days, return on day six. Close contact, no quarantine required. However, the individual should wear a mask for 10 days after close contact. If at any point symptoms develop, stay home and test with a rapid test. And Lord knows, the Board of Health has provided an ample supply of rapid tests--
When he's still downstairs, yeah.
I think it's amazing what they have done over the last several months, and Chief Clancy is certainly a big part of that process. He's been forward-thinking enough to jump at it when we've had the chance, both for kids and teens. So thank you for that. They also recommend, when calculating days, positive test day is zero. So if the Board approves these recommendations, I will circulate them to all departments.
Okay, and send a motion to adopt the guidelines as printed here in the back from the letter.
I'll make that motion. Discussion?
Second.
Discussion.
Frank, this is basically strictly for town employees only?
This is guidance for the town, but it's also guidance for the public.
Right.
Certainly what works for us would also be working for people who work outside the town properties, because the infections process is still the same, the exposure is still the same, maybe even a little greater in smaller groups and families, so.
Yeah. I understand, because I know when I got COVID, and I made sure that I tested negative, four tests in a row, and on that medication for a week that the doctor prescribed, and it works. I mean, it's lousy that, you know, I sleep in one room and my wife slept in another room, sheets in another room, I eat in the kitchen.
This is a family program.
I know it, so that's the way it is. So anyways, I think the protocol is correct, and anyone who receives it, they should get in touch with their physician, their primary care, and follow through on what they suggest to do, and correct it. I mean, mine was gone in a week. So a week to 10 days, so. That's all I have to say.
Any further discussion?
I think this matches the DPH guidelines that my department follows as well, so.
And department heads have more stricter guidelines, Frank? The department head set those?
I think for the sake of uniformity, we should all be following the same rules.
One thing we did, one thing we talked about is based upon some of the conditions that we live and work in, they wanted to put the opportunity in there that we could, the department head, such as myself as chief handling, or Bruce Ramble--
Oh, okay.
That we can impose stricter guidelines past this, so that we weren't five days due to outliving requirements. So they wanted to give us the opportunity to impose stricter guidelines. I believe that was the guideline.
Okay. Motion and second. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Adult participant release waiver of liability and indemnity agreement.
As you know, we ensure liability with the Massachusetts International Insurance Association. We are in a pool of self-insured municipalities, and they provide risk management and guidelines. They are strongly recommending that communities who offer the senior work program, we adopt a policy that in order to work that program, the volunteers should sign a waiver acknowledging, one, that they're not insured by the town, two, that the, whatever risks one takes in the normal course of events are risks that they take on their own, and that they're responsible for their care. On the outside, that may sound a little cold, but when you think about it, we're permitting people who wish to volunteer and receive a tax benefit for doing it, but are not employees, that we should not be assuming overreaching liabilities for those individuals. And it's something that I think if the Board has any concern, we might want to put it out publicly now and take it up again at the next meeting when people have had a chance to review it, but I would like your permission to circulate the information to the Council on Aging and other departments that may engage volunteers.
Would we have Town Council draft up a form, or--
There actually is, there actually is a form created by Maya. And I can certainly have Town Council look at it.
All right. So--
Yeah, I do have some concerns. I feel like this, people who are going to volunteer for the town should be protected by the town to some degree, if they're working-- Yeah, I think in many ways we rely on those people to function, and if in the normal course of things, as you said, something happened, I don't think it should be, you know, I don't think we should stretch ourselves ridiculously, but just like any other employee, if they, if something happened with COVID or whatnot, they should be covered. Yeah, I'd have to learn more about it, I guess, because I do have some questions, so.
I'll be happy to get more narrative on it.
I have another question. This includes people that do Meals on Wheels for the senior center?
Well, it would be any volunteers. Now, Meals on Wheels folks are running, the town assumes no liability for it, they're operating their own vehicles on their own--
Right, yeah, right.
And this is really what this concept is.
And the only, what they get is mileage, paid per mileage. No tax, there's no tax.
I think the primary thrust in this is making sure people understand that they're not engaged as employees, but as volunteers with tax credits. And what happens is, if you open your operations to, let's say, a number of volunteers, you're increasing your insurance risk, you're increasing your potential liability by adding those additional people into the workplace. I'm sure that the reason Maya is putting this out is because of the claims they've incurred as a result of that. And I'm not suggesting that we run a sweatshop where people are working in dangerous situations, but if you're volunteering, the argument is that you're doing it on your own, that the town isn't soliciting your employment and shouldn't take on additional liability for doing that. So I hear that there are some questions, I will see if I can get more.
So even beyond the senior work program, Frank, would it be a good idea to, like, volunteer, committee volunteers that--
Probably, I think the risk is greater when you have people in the workplace as opposed to just coming to a meeting.
Okay.
But I will get more information, and again, that's why I wanted to bring this back and put it out there, I want to hear from the folks at the biggest volunteer center, which is the COA, the library, and the town hall, and get the supportive information that Maya may have in providing this program. But again, as a town, we have an obligation to deliver services to people, and we have an obligation to our employees. They're trying to make it clear that while these folks are volunteering, they're not in the class of employee, and I don't know that anyone would say, well, geez, if I had to sign a waiver, I'm not going to do this. There may be. Be interesting to see the responses.
Ask the question, if I may, if, say, library, someone's working in the library, and they're going to the library, and it's snowing out, and they slipped out in front of the library and got hurt going to work, slipped in the snow, are they, if they're hurt, I mean, does the town cover that expense?
Would we pay an employee walking over to the town hall who slips on the ice before they begin working? If it's a work-related injury, it's a work-related injury. If it isn't, it isn't.
Okay. Okay. Somebody at the library is bringing out the trash, they're working, that's what they do.
That's a worker's comp case, if you're an employee.
Yeah.
If you volunteer, it's a different story, and that's part of what has to be identified.
Right. That's the main thing, yeah.
All right. So did you want to send this back to council, Frank?
I will send the form to council, but I'll also seek some anecdotal.
All right. Then we'll take it up for the next meeting.
We'll bring it back as old business.
All right.
So you need, do you need another motion to table, or no?
Well, we haven't made a motion to do anything with it.
We discussed it, so we've fulfilled the requirement of the agenda. Set up Y23 trash rate. It's in the packet.
This is an interesting one.
I know it, yeah.
The Public Works has provided us with some basic information, and bear in mind, some of it's factual and some of it's estimate. Based on the numbers that appear in the breakdown sheet, the calculated rate for trash would be 30932 per unit. However, the DPW is asking that we set a cost of $300 per unit. Now, the difference is $9, I believe there's around, just under 4,000 trash customers.
4618, according to the next--
Yeah, that sounds higher than I thought.
Yeah.
But, all right, even at 40-- But, all right, even at 46, about 17.5, a little more than that, is what we're putting at risk, that we may incur more than we're billing. At the same time, we're also estimating what the numbers will be. And the one thing about trash is it's extremely volatile. It's it's up and down constantly. It's a municipal service we provide. If we guess wrong, and it's more than 300 per unit, then we wind up dipping into the levy to pay for it. If we're conservative, and we come back a little better, then we have some surplus funds. We are certainly doing what we can to control the costs. In the fact, today Bruce told me, we got a small grant for sustainable materials. It's $4,500, but I'm not going to turn away money if they offer to give it to us to help support our efforts. So I'm, I'm okay with the 300 per unit. It's like anything else, we estimate it, we're either going to be above, below, or right on target.
Frank, what's the tax rate, what's the trash rate right now? Anybody remember?
I believe it's 2.
285, I think.
225 and?
285.
285?
Yeah.
I think we held it constant last year.
Right, it was 285. And was there a senior discount of what, 25?
Yes.
I believe.
I think so.
Yes, we've always had that senior discount. And so they're asking to go up to 300?
Correct.
And a senior discount stay at $25 off?
There's no comment on it, so I assume they're keeping the current program.
Well, I think the Board and in the DPW has always, you know, tried to help the seniors out on that. So I have not witnessed any pushback on the senior discount.
Right. I think the main thing for the senior discount is, like I always said, like, I get the senior discount. Why? Because I have this much trash and this much, and this much recycle. Because there's only two of us in the household. It's not like a family that, I mean, I pay for, what is it, 85, 85?
Well, and that's, that's a presumption when we first introduced the idea of a discount. Larger families generate more trash, smaller families generate less trash.
All right.
I think this is one of those areas that I'd like to learn a whole lot more about, you know? Not that I don't trust those guys. It's just, I personally don't know a whole lot about this information, and I'd like to kind of spend some time understanding how they do their projections and, you know, because it, like you said, if we go with the low rate, but it, we guess wrong, then there are repercussions, and we do have to dip into levy. And, you know, so I'm curious as to why, you know, the thorough decision behind what they did, you know, I'd like to have some of that, access to some of that knowledge, and then.
That information is available. We can demonstrate or generate a list of how much tons we generate at weekly and annually. The really curious part of it was, when I looked at this, when I talked to Bruce about it last year, not as a TA, but just as an interested party, I found that we were paying more to recycle than we were to dispose. I believe that has shifted a little, but the recycling market is just totally bottomed out. And we have to do something, because eventually, we're going to run out of landfill space. I just remember years ago, down in New York, they were putting that stuff on ships and sending it out to sea with no idea of where it was going to go.
Down.
Hopefully not.
Well, I can remember from last year's, when they came up, there was something that the recycling cost were getting higher because of the people putting the wrong.
Unacceptable.
Unacceptable, and especially the bags, the bags that everyone complains that we got rid of. Well, the ultimate problem with those was the machine can't eat those, or they end up getting.
Right.
Gummed up.
Gummed up and breaking down the machine.
Yeah, it actually reached the point where they were rejecting truckloads because of what was in the bag.
Right. I do know they get the the basic from, you know, they know exactly how many tons, how many trucks, they're getting pulled away. So this isn't like a thin-air number. I'm sure it's probably just a little bit over what they actually did last year. So it's not that they're pulling it from thin air, that they kind of have a, if you talk to Bruce.
And we're, the town's a member of the South Shore Recycling Co-op. They're a good resource to, if you just want to pop in a meeting at some point.
And this needs a vote tonight, because that's the son of the bill, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make the motion that they're recommending $300 a household or unit, and to maintain the senior discount, as if we've done in the past.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. All right. Intern Town Administrator's report, marijuana bylaw update.
After much analysis, and God knows what else, in Boston, the Attorney General has finally approved our marijuana bylaw. They have, however, interestingly enough, disallowed the provision that we have in the bylaw that gives examples of what is and isn't acceptable for advertising. It's just, I talked to our council, it makes little sense to understand why we would reiterate specifically what the law says, but we're not allowed to put it in our bylaw. But that was the only piece they struck. The balance of the bylaw is approved as voted. So now we have two companies that would like to come before the Board of Selectmen in a meeting next, our next meeting, on the 29th, to present their operating plan and discuss next steps to setting up a business. The two, there's another one out there that I'm not quite sure of. A third, third company.
We have four applicants in total.
I thought we had three live ones.
Check that.
The, and the companies that want, that we met with most recently was one presenting at the old Regal Shoe Building, and the other presenting at the old Toll House Homestead property. And Sean, or Randy, you may, or Justin, you may remember what the third one was.
We had, yeah, prior to you coming in here, we had two more applicants, both on different parts of Route 18, that met with myself, Sean, the former Town Administrator and Council.
Okay. But I've heard nothing since then. I don't know how viable they are, but we'll certainly reach out and.
Yeah, Peter drafted a letter to send out to them. Did we issue that, or were we waiting for this?
We were waiting for the approval of the bylaw.
Okay.
He sent, he sent us back a drafted letter just two days ago.
Okay, that's right.
So it's in the process.
Right.
Yeah. So I imagine he'll issue it to all four.
All he's waiting for is to me to say, yes, we're going to meet on the 29th.
Gotcha.
And just to clarify, Frank, the part we had in the bylaw, you know, limiting and kind of controlling where advertisement goes, even though it's not in the bylaw, the town still controls that, controls that.
No, the Cannabis Control Commission does. They specify what can and can't be displayed. We would pursue a violation, but the rules are set by the CCC. And I think that's why the AG didn't want us to include our guidance, because it wasn't required under the bylaw. The bylaw requires what the business owner needs to know in order to operate. I think it's very similar to what you have when, in municipal services, if you go to a building inspector or building department, and you get a permit to do something with your property. Hopefully, we do everything we can to make sure it's right, and you go off and you build. If we made a mistake, we're not liable. The guy who owns the property is. And I think that's the concept they're using here, that anything we provide as guidance isn't necessarily going to mitigate whatever rules the CCC has. That's the only logic I can think of that would make them land where they did.
Yeah, the specific part they struck was, when we talk about signage, and say marijuana businesses may develop a logo to be used in labeling signage and other materials, they struck out use of medical symbols, images of marijuana-related paraphernalia, and colloquial references to cannabis and marijuana are prohibited from use in signs visible from the exterior of the building, conflicting with CCC regulations. So I think they just, they didn't want us to have slightly different restrictions than the Cannabis Control Commission related to the external signage.
Gotcha, okay.
It seemed like a non-issue.
It wouldn't budge.
Like everyone's heard tonight, that, you know, the bylaw has been accepted, and we do have candidates. And from what I hear, candidates that are ready to act if chosen. So that should be revenue we do see relatively, I'm not going to say quick, but it's definitely on the horizon. And the picture's getting clearer that it's going to come, and it's going to help support some town, some town function. Anyone else that?
No.
No? All right. And you didn't need any, any vote on that, just?
No, I'll just notify them that we're ready to meet on the 29th.
All right, seeing that is exhausted the agenda, I'd seek a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you, everyone.